The, starting on page 12 and going on to 13, this is cost center 14, which is the second segment of the large number for the account. That's how we break it out. And you will notice that transportation, many of the items, like Jeff's salary, is split in two parts. Half for regular ed and half for special ed. It doesn't mean when he's, you know, he's there full-time. It's just that, that's just the way we apportion it so for reporting for the Department of Education. So, on the first slide, and Jeff was gonna talk a little bit about why any of these have changed.
These particular line items have changed significantly in comparison to last year. Right now, we currently pay the town of Plymouth. We jointly transport students to the Bristol Agricultural School in Dayton. And right now, we pay Plymouth to do that for us. It's my intention to bring that back to us for the next school year, providing I have a vehicle and a driver available. Because if we're gonna do it, this is a good year to do it because of a transition that'll be happening up there. So, that's the comparison between what we pay and what we pay out and what we would pay a driver for next year. The next two is because of the increase in summer activities, summer school care program, it's necessary to have the secretary of the Transportation Department there year-round rather than on a school year schedule. So, that's just the increase in her salary. The next is because of that vehicle we purchased last year, we provide transportation for our students that go to the specialized school in New Bedford, the Swart Center. It brings out the wheelchair students from Wareham to New Bedford rather than paying an outside contractor like we did last year. We still do have to have some money in that category because that also covers some of the parents who may be reimbursed for transportation. Or like this year, for a week, we did have to hire an outside company. So, it's still necessary to have some money in there. But the big cost, because of the vehicle that we got, it's taken away a significant amount of that line item. And the next one is that category for paying our sped drivers was underfunded last year. We've also had a dramatic, three times increase in the number of monitors that are required for the students in town. It's just, that happens. That, you know, there could be a decrease, but it could continue to increase. And the way things are going, I anticipate that it will increase more than anything. But there is significant pay required for the monitors that we use.
Well, put that in context. How much do they make an hour?
Nine fifty to ten dollars per hour. It's about ninety-five thousand dollars in a year, roughly.
It's nine fifty an hour, but no benefits, correct?
Correct. They're all part-time, yes.
All right, so, let's see if we can drag this guy down.
Can I ask one question before we go to the next one?
Yes.
On the, on the new sped bus, what was the, what was the cost of the bus?
I think the final price was ninety-five.
Ninety.
Ninety-three, ninety-five thousand.
And so, it's a ninety-five thousand dollar investment that saved us a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in
In a year.
In a private, you know, paying a private contractor.
Okay. So, we got one, so we got about just under fourteen thousand dollars a year, if you had depreciation rather than expensing it out to go to that as well.
Yeah, seven, yeah, yes, yes. A seven-year depreciation is what they used. Okay?
Thank you.
Repair costs. They just continue to rise as our fleet ages. Obviously, there are some more repairs that need to be done to ensure the safety of all the students that travel on them. So, with an aging fleet comes an increased cost to repair those vehicles. So, that's what our, you know, that justifies that increase right there. Regular salaries, again, it just is underfunded last year. Sped vehicles, it's aging fleet again. The other expenses, increased cost, that's licenses, physicals, and as we increase in staff and requirements that we pay for, it's just an increase for those reimbursements of licenses, physicals, making sure all the required documents that drivers need are taken care of.
So, that's all of those? Okay. Why don't you talk about this one a little bit?
This next, must be our two slides.
Yes, it is.
The next two slides, what I, what I've done is I've taken any vehicle from July 1st to this past Friday that has cost us more than two thousand dollars to repair already in this fiscal year and tried to explain exactly what, to the best of my ability through EZ Bus, what the repairs were. And some of them were outside repairs, but we also entered those as well. So, you can see there's a significant repairs as far as maintaining the undercarriages of the vehicles and any, you know, rust issues or corrosion issues because they're fixed.
I, I'm sorry, the repairs, I don't see it in our, I'm sure it's here, but I don't see it in our
What line item would you, we pay the repairs on?
Repairers would come out of
Supplies.
Supplies.
Supplies and materials.
Is the fifth line down, starting from the top of the category?
Transportation, supplies, materials.
Oh, four, thirty-three, oh, five.
Two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars budgeted for this year.
Thank you very much. Sorry.
And that's split up between regular and sped, so there's two.
There's two supply accounts.
There's a regular supply account and a sped supply account.
First line, page thirteen.
And top of, yeah, page thirteen is the sped supplies, which is up seventy-two grand.
To Sam's point, it's not the greatest description I've ever seen to include repair and maintenance. So, maybe we could adjust the description at some point to be more reflective of where the money is actually.
So, instead of saying sped supplies?
Excuse me?
Instead of scrawling it supplies?
You could, you could put, most of the cost is associated with
Maintenance.
Maintenance, correct?
I believe it's also gas in that line.
That's where we pay fuel. Yep, comes out of there.
Well, supplies is such an ambiguous term. I think we could do better.
Do we pay for paper towels with it?
Maybe we need another category.
You can have subcategories.
Another line item wouldn't hurt. There's not a lot of paper there.
The paper's already seventeen pages long. Okay, I hear you.
Well, but it's, add up those two items, and they're over four-hundred thousand dollars against a budget of a million five.
But what we do and
Don't tell me you're restricted by VEDAR.
No.
Good.
But what we do is Jeff has a separate, when he comes in and we meet with him, he has a separate worksheet for each one of those accounts so that I can see what actually makes up that. So, I hear you. What I'm hearing you say is perhaps on a thing like that, a separate slide that lays out how that account was put out might be clearer.
Worst case, if you really wanted to be minimalist about this, take the category about which most of the dollars are being spent. Use that as the description and then put comma miscellaneous. But the one thing you don't want is something that people can't figure out what it refers to.
Right. But that's why I'm glad you asked the question so we can clarify. But you're right, we should make it clearer.
Two things. One, do you have a list of the age of each, actually, year of manufacture of each one of the buses?
Yes.
Because, you know, the comment is, well, some buses can last twenty years, and everybody throws all this information that doesn't mean anything. But it'd be nice to see where they are because I think they fall all over the place.
I'm sure we've provided that before. We'd be happy to do it again.
It'd just be a good idea if people're gonna ask the question. And the other thing is on the revolving fund, in the, in that particular account that you call supplies, any of those supplies paid out of the transportation revolving account as far as payment? Or is that, those that are paid as a separate from supplies? Because you pay different things out of the revolving account.
Yeah.
On the revolver, if income came in, so, PTA pays for a trip for the children to go to a museum, that driver's salary then comes out of that revolver. The gasoline for that trip comes out of the revolver, which is a supply in this particular case. But that's usually what's paid out of the revolver.
How's the expense recognized in your accounting system? Is it, is it recognized in that regular supply account or is it?
Which expense are we talking about?
Well, it's
From the revolver.
You're paying some gasoline.
No, that's, it's in its own separate, it's not part of the VEDAR accounting system. That's paid out of the revolving account, and it's kept on an Excel spreadsheet.
Okay. My only comment there is that when we're showing the actual costs, you know, we try and analyze stuff, you've got a separate set of costs that aren't showing up in the main costs.
When we, when we get into Jeff's part of his presentation
Jeff has added it in.
Has added it in.
I understand, but before that, we weren't. That's what
Right.
People were using it as another tool to say this and that.
Right. And that's why we've done the other analysis.
Thank you.
All right. So, the next one on this is the continuation of the same thing, which is special ed. These are sped vehicles where we've spent over
Two thousand.
Two thousand dollars. And it shows, is this where we can see the
You can see the two engine failures on B-46 and W-5.
All right. Those are the emergency that we're facing now, where we find ourselves in gridlock because we need to do something about these. Jeff has come to me and, and I understand now, I'm moving from budget into capital, but he has said that in his mind, he could run what he has to pick up and drop off with 7D vehicles rather than getting these half buses, so to speak, for less expense. A 7D used vehicle may cost us outfitted, ready to roll, about ten thousand dollars apiece. That's with the lift?
These ones would not have a lift.
These would not have a lift.
No, these would not have.
All right.
Unless we found one already in.
Okay. So, about ten thousand dollars apiece.
That's used, obviously.
Yes, these are used. They're about two or three years old, you know, twenty-five, thirty thousand miles on them. And because new, you know, they cost twenty grand versus one of these yellow vehicles costing us sixty grand new. And better mileage for gas, and particularly with a special ed population where we may be taking a child, one or two children, to a homeless location like, you know, off the top of your head, one or two kids going to
We've got some going in Halifax.
Halifax.
One that goes to a special program in Marshfield, one that goes to a special program in Hingham.
It's cheaper to run it that way. But we need to have the vehicle to be able to do it.
It's also easier to find a driver because a 7D license is very easy to get and maintain whereas a regular school bus license is not.
Correct.
Do you have to, are you required by state law to equip these two buses with, you know, wheelchair access or not?
No.
If, no, if we have students that need wheelchairs, obviously, they need a wheelchair vehicle, but
These are reg, they're students without wheelchairs that we're transporting.
These would basically take care of your needs for students who don't require wheelchairs.
Yeah, these would be able-bodied, for the most part, students that have special requirements, you know, non, non-chair and/or stroller.
It's not saying that we're not gonna need a wheelchair access special ed vehicle, but for the immediacy, for twenty grand to pick up two of these 7Ds will keep us in the business.
Thank you.
All right. Now, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, Jeff, do you wanna lay out for us, and I'll find it on here and
It's, hopefully, it's minimized.
Yeah, I, it's all I can, I have.
Okay. Just throw it up. And it's not designed to take a lot of time.
Well, while Dr. Avinevich is doing that, I started looking at some numbers yesterday, these two engine failures. If we do not replace these vehicles and we pay a private contractor, we are looking at the Marshfield run, it will run us nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars for half a year. You know, that's a half a year. The Hingham run will run us fifteen thousand, seven hundred fifty for the half year. These two vehicles. So, I mean, to me, you look at, okay, you make a twenty thousand dollar investment and you save how much money? I mean, I'm really, I mean, especially when money is so tight. I think a lot of my frustration is constantly throwing good money at bad. You know, instead of just, you know, coming up with the most cost-efficient, you know, solution.
The next one over, Barry, I think. Isn't that
I have three ideas.
No, it's an Excel spreadsheet, it's not a PowerPoint.
Oh, oh, okay.
Oh, yours is Excel.
It's the middle one.
Yep.
Right there.
There it goes, yep.
All right. I was looking for a PowerPoint.
Correct.
Is there more than one sheet or do I need to?
It, it just goes down. You can page down. And I apologize for the, for the fact that it's not all that legible. But let me just briefly talk about what you're looking at, and I think all of you have already seen it. But it was a desire to look at the Transportation Department not as a part of the school department, but almost like an enterprise fund. In other words, how, how is it functioning as an independent entity from a financial perspective? So, the first column are the actual expenditures and revenue associated with the Transportation Department. So, that's reality. So, the first line is what we got from the town. The second, three lines are all associated with revenue associated with the revolving account. So, that would be athletic transportation within the district, non-athletic transportation, field trips, for example, within the district, and then non-district transportation, which is restricted by regulation, but thanks to the entrepreneurial efforts of Jeff and, and his predecessors, we actually do generate some money providing transportation to other districts. So, when you get down to it, at that point, you have a gross revenue. Now, I'm just looking at FY11, I'm doing it, I shouldn't, my eyesight says it's about 1.5 million, but I can, I can do better if I actually look at the numbers with the hard And then, then I subtracted from that, before I got what I'll call net revenue, in-kind expenses. Now, the in-kind are, by definition, things that we don't directly pay for, but are in fact true costs of the town. Health for active and retired employee benefits, trivial amount for maintenance, snow and ice, administrative services, which basically gets at the estimate of the services we're getting from town staff as compared to school staff, and finally, vehicle insurance. That category all by itself totals over two-hundred thousand dollars. Keep in mind, when you're looking at that number, that many of that is already being absorbed, much of that is already being absorbed by the school. So, although it's a true expense and deserves to be within this P and L, it is not something that the, the town isn't already being reimbursed by the school department, it simply is being absorbed by the school department and isn't reflected in the, in the Transportation Department's budget. Then finally, you have what Alan was referring to earlier, revolving fund expenses that we actually carve out, which are salaries and fuel of about thirty-six thousand dollars a year. So, what I'm calling net revenue for fiscal year 2011, i.e. the year that ended June 30th of this past year, is one, a little over 1.3 million. The expenses are, as I said, actual. There's nothing surprising in there until you get to the very bottom, and that's where I put in four-hundred thousand dollars worth of depreciation. Now, with, with the exception of the fact that the town, not on its budget, but on its financial statements, recognizes some depreciation, and in fact, it's, it's millions of dollars, this doesn't appear anywhere. Now, the, the amount of the depreciation, you can argue. I have used it on the basis of eighty thousand dollars a vehicle, five vehicles a year, useful life of ten years, no residual value. Now, frankly, when I was in the business world and we were concerned about things like profit and taxes, it was all very nice to use seven years, and if you got to accelerate your depreciation, you were actually happy. In this case, it makes, it makes, has no value to the town to accelerate depreciation, and I have not included any residual value. So, what you see there is the assumption that at the end of ten, ten years, these vehicles will essentially have zero value. If we use seven years, I don't see the value in doing that because, as I said, there's no profit and taxes, et cetera. It would add about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year to the depreciation schedule, but then you'd have to worry about what the residual value was every year that we had five-year buses that we were getting rid of, because otherwise, we'd have no functional value in doing it that way. Once again, I'm open to adjustment of this document. I don't pretend it's perfect. It's a first attempt at illuminating exactly what the department represents as a business. Now, FY12 is based upon three or four months of actual data, and then extrapolating that data to what we think will be the true situation at the end of the year in which we're currently operating. And then finally, FY13 is consistent with the document that you have in front of you today. Now, I do wanna draw your attention to the bottom lines. The bottom lines, let's say for FY11, shows a deficit of four-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars. What that means is, if you take out the non-cash item of four-hundred thousand dollars for depreciation, you're still left with a fifty-three thousand dollar deficit. The reason you, we haven't come back for more money is because in-kind expenses and revenue make that also somewhat, it's not a true cash situation as well. In other words, we're not paying two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, or the Transportation Department, more accurately, isn't paying two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars of in-kind expenses, which we're showing as part of our adjustments to revenue. So, the reality is, on paper, we're running a deficit, but, but in actual fact, we're running a surplus, and that is strictly because of the fact that in-kind is being absorbed by the school department. That doesn't vary tremendously from FY12 and FY13. You can see it was five-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollar deficit for FY12, and we're projecting a four-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollar deficit for FY13. If you take, and this is sort of the important thing to take out of this, if you take the transportation, the very first line item, let's say for FY13, since that's what this day is all about, of a million five-eighty-five, and you add the deficit of four-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars, you get just a little over two million dollars. It's what, it's actually costing the town to operate the Department of Transportation. I would argue that that's the way we should look at this business. We can play around with the numbers, anything we wanna do. In fact, that's why I sent it to Capital Planning and the Finance Committee, so they could play around with the numbers and adjust them as you see fit based on other information that you might like to use. Obviously, Jeff and Anna, and Anna will be happy to talk about any of this information or give you more information if you'd like to adjust this. This is an attempt to start a conversation. But, but I do believe that we're looking at about a two million dollar contribution, either in the form of capital investments or in the form of operating investment, depending on which piece you're talking about. With that, I will open it up to questions, the nitty-gritty to Jeff and Anna, and to, and conceptually perhaps to me. Dave?
I can remember when Capital Planning first looked at this problem about two and a half years ago. I remember distinctly I had black hair at that point. It's gone downhill since, I wonder, the last time that Capital Planning did look at this particular issue, we were talking about seven buses. And based on an accelerated need, based for our, our current age of the fleet, how we got there, there's a lot of issues, positive and negative, that caused that. When we looked at it, it was like ninety-one thousand for a seven-bus lease each year. And then in the third year, it became ninety-one thousand plus, plus a buyout of the seven buses of about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
This is based on absolute purpose?
Right.
This.
So, looking at the lease side, it swings from your four-hundred thousand to like six-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand. However, I wanna commend you for at least putting this together, putting four-hundred thousand dollars in there as, as a question of depreciation. Because whether you call it depreciation, you call it replacement. And the, the same, it is the same result. You have to provision for how you're going to replace these buses in a logical manner. And it directly does affect that 1.585, whether you call it four-hundred thousand, you call it six-hundred thousand. We're really talking
Absolutely.
Two million versus 2.2 million. It's a starting point for a conversation, because I, I do recognize that there are, there are multiple opinions on this particular subject. And I, I commend you for starting the, the discussion with a, with a realization of depreciation or replacement costs is a, is a, is a big start.
Thank you. I don't wanna spend a lot of time on it. This wasn't the forum intended for an extended conversation, but I just, since Jeff and Anna are here, I just wanted to give everybody the opportunity to do so. If not, we can move on, but I'm not rushing anybody.
One quick question, Jeff. On the surplus deficit, say for budget of fiscal year 13, or even going back to 11 or 12, that particular deficit, that, a lot of that is financed through the revolver account? That's paid for?
Yeah. With the, with the exception, obviously, of, not obviously, with, the only thing that we pull out is fuel and salaries. So, if you take the revolving revenue, projected revolving revenue of, for some reason, I didn't do a subtotal on that, but it looks like it's about a hundred and, little over two-hundred thousand dollars of revolving revenue. If you take that and you subtract thirty-six thousand dollars worth of expenses, you get somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and, a hundred and sixty-plus thousand dollars of, of contribution to the enterprise by the revolver. Now, technically, you could, you should obviously take some depreciation out of that because there is some depreciation associated with it. But when you think of the revolver, the use of the vehicles for the revolver compared to the reuse of the revi, vehicles for all the rest of the operations, it's a pretty small amount. So, I still think the revolver appears to be contributing somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty or so thousand dollars to the enterprise in, in a positive way. But I'm open to debate on that. I'm just, those are just rough numbers.
Okay. So, basically, the revolver over the last three or four years has averaged on a yearly basis about four-hundred thousand dollars income coming in?
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying it's about half that on an annual basis, and if you subtract the expenses, the actual contribution to the business is about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. Probably what we'll need just for our own records, the one that I did get information was, was a ledger sheet copy, and it basically came out, had a negative balance at the end, but if you went and added up what it was during the year, that's what the figure came out to. That's why we were a little bit different.
There, there are certainly times when I have seen balances, let's differentiate between revenue and balances in, in a balance sheet, balances over three-hundred thousand dollars. That's accumulation of a number of years of revenue minus expenses.
Well, I think the one we had actually had a negative, then went positive, then ended up negative.
And that's what's happening now since, because we pulled quite a few dollars out of there when we bought a vehicle and did various things. So, on an annual basis, I think you, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, on an annual basis, I think you can see it as generating a little over two-hundred thousand dollars in revenue with an association of fifty thousand or so, fifty, sixty thousand in expenses for a net contribution of about a hundred and fifty.
If you could, when they do provide that, it'd be good if we get the actual true income versus what's showing up on the ledger, because if you go back and manually pull it out, which is what we had to do, we're coming up with a figure that's probably a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars higher than what you actually have.
Anna, could you assist Alan in that effort?
That will solve one major problem right there alone.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Similar to Dave's comment about the depreciation, I applaud that. And I think that's a very good idea to recognize that. Is it possible, or would it be possible going forward, to not only recognize the depreciation, which is a non-cash charge, but also to go ahead and say to the taxpayers, we're going to take the money, we're actually going to get the money from you, Mr. and Ms. taxpayer, and put it into a stabilization fund, so that every year, we go four hundred thousand and eight hundred thousand, so that when we get to the point where we have to buy new buses, we don't go through the, over these hurdles to try to get the money, we've already got the money set aside.
Well, what I, the, the short answer is yes, but what I would prefer is to set up, either officially or unofficially, what I'll call a capital reserve account. In essence, we're saying the same thing. The stabilization means something, to think to taxpayers in a more broad sense, and I don't think it's a good idea to confuse it. So if the school department, or if the Transportation Department, and that will add even more, had a specific vehicle capital reserve account, because I think Jeff will tell you, depending on the vehicle he's, he's replacing, we use four hundred thousand, because I think Jeff is comfortable with that, but there'll be times he might spend a little bit less than that on an annual basis, and sometimes he might spend a little bit more. So the answer to your question is, I'd love for that to be done, and I think it makes a lot of sense to give people a comfort about where the money's going.
Good.
Yeah, sure. Well, I have to say, I continue to have concerns, though, comparing it to any bid that we've received to date, because the bids that went out, nothing else, said that there was a three-year average life on the buses. You know, some people's already said to you, Al, if it's five years, wouldn't make any difference to me. Well, we're talking buses on the road for, you know, six years old versus ten years old, et cetera. From a business point of view, if you had the ability to go ten years, you could lower your, your prices. All right? So I think it's a great analysis, I think it's a great starting point, but I think trying to compare it to some of the things we've seen in the past, it leaves too many, too many questions. We would have to actually talk to some of the bidders and say, fine, if we were allowing you to have a five-year, and they may come back and say, we wouldn't even want to do that. We need to have that actually objected to by the company and given to the town as we would not even want to bid that.
It's a great point. And I, and I asked the same question of, of Jeff, because I wanted to, to put a P and L together based on reality, and you're right, the bids were, were a different reality. So Jeff would, because Jeff came out of the for-profit school transportation business, so he's particularly valuable to have some insight on this question. So Jeff, you want to talk about that? Because I asked them to go rebid, so it wasn't an apples-to-oranges comparison. And Jeff, go ahead.
We, we can't do a ten-year bid. We can't even do a five-year bid. Most we can do is a three-year bid with a possibility of two one-year extensions. And that is the absolute max, that, that we're blessed to live in one of two states that this limit, that this restriction's in. But that's all we can do. We can do a three-year bid with the possibility of two one-year extensions, and that's all we can go up.
But, no, 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 but to Frank's point, if, if the bids said the average life of the bus could be-
Would be ten years?
No, no, no. Could be five instead of three. What would that do to the bid?
Very little, because now you'd still have to-
They want to see it in black and white, though.
They would have to have, you know, they could have fifty percent new and fifty percent old, but they're still going to have this replacement cost in the final year, so anyone who's going to bid it is going to bid new.
That's what the, the last bid that you got that we had, I think the bid was forty-eight two thousand ten or two thousand eleven buses.
Yeah, but even if we bid it, so it said, you know, the vehicles could be two thou, no more than five years old, and I'm sorry if I'm not wording it right, but no more than five years old, but the average age, the, the word average age is what we, the problem starts to come in, is when you get to the average age, because no company's going to mess around with that. So that's where, that's where the issue is, the average age part, because they're just going to bid new stuff.
Is there any way to get Alan and Frank and you and Anna and this low bidder in the same room, so that they can hear it dur, it's not that they don't believe you, it's that they need, there needs to be serious credibility about this issue, so that we can put it to bed. Is there any way that could happen?
I could certainly get someone from a private school bus company. I could not commit to the low bidder, though.
Fine. Just someone who could help them better understand why the difference between the two point four million, which is, which was our low bidder, and changing, changing the dynamics of the bid wouldn't have any significant impact on the bid.
I, I could ask the question, you know, I could ask if someone would come meet with us, yes.
I think we need to do that to give as much backup to the position that we're taking as possible, so that these gentlemen can argue on our behalf, rather than feeling uncomfortable doing so.
I, I could ask them to come speak to us.
That would be great.
Okay.
I mean, from, from a private-
Yes.
-school bus company.
Yes.
I can ask. I mean, obviously, I can't make anyone, but I could certainly ask, yeah.
Okay. Take them to lunch.
As exciting as the subject of transportation can be, it is time to move on. Thank you very much, Jeff, and we are now going to go into the Wareham Cooperative Junior/Senior High School. Kathy Moore Minkel is the interim principal, and this is her first year at the cooperative school. And on your seventeen-page document, the accounts are on page six, starting at the top, and it's called the Junior/Senior High School Clerical, well, that's the first one, Junior/Senior High School. This is the Alternative Junior/Senior High School. So this is a regular ed program, not a special ed program, for students that have difficulty in our grade seven through twelve, being in the regular program.
It's the very top.
Very top of page six. And by the way, that is a building that we recycled a number of years ago. It was the dilapidated playhouse with holes in the roof and birds living inside. Our Fields and Grounds Department put it back together, and now it's been used as a school first, as an annex of the high school, and now as the Alternative Junior/Senior High School. Kathy, take it away.
So principal supplies is, this is what I do, right?
Yep. Or just where you see major increases.
Okay. The increase to one thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars is for agendas for students, printer supplies, awards and certificates. The five hundred dollars, just looking over the past budgets, was not enough money. The textbook AV is a new account, thirty-two hundred dollars. Our textbooks were mainly, excuse me, mainly from the middle school and the high school. Some of the textbooks are not at the reading level of our students. So we researched a program from National Geographic, which is more of a tiered instruction, to be able to reach all of our students. The stories and the informational text is geared to the reluctant reader.
Kathy, could you help the committee who may not be as familiar with the program? Where do your students come from? How do they get to your school?
Our students are students at risk. A lot of them are involved in the court system. A lot of them were in the behavioral programs at the middle school or high school, and were referred by a committee that we meet, a transition committee meets once a month, and we discuss students at risk and which ones may fit our program, which ones might fit West Wareham Academy. The, the principal of the school, we're the sending school, meets with the parents and might suggest this as a program for a student.
And how many from out-of-district students do that?
Right now, at our school, at the cooperative school, I'm not, I'm not sure how many are at the PM two program. I did the registrations last week, and there were quite a few from out-of-district there. At our school right now, we have three.
Three out of?
Out of, what, what town?
No, no. Out of a total population of about-
Total population, not for PM, but-
Sixty or during the day.
Um, we have a maximum of fifty. Right now, we have about thirty-six, but we have a waiting list for January.
Waiting list for January, including from out-of-district?
No, this is just within district right now. I have one applicant from out-of-district.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The other account is the computer supplies. The twelve thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollar increase is because we have one laptop cart where there are about seven laptops at work. The batteries do not charge. There are keys missing on some of the laptops, and the laptops get a lot of use with our E twenty twenty, just using Microsoft Word. We want to bring in a robotics program, which is something that we'd need the laptops for. Also, we are looking into this learning by design program, where architects work with the students, and it's also a web-based program. Building maintenance, right now, we're already, have a deficit for our building maintenance, and I know a lot of improvements were done to the school over the summer. And we find that if we continue to improve the space, that that account will need to be increased. Those are the major increases.
All right, you've already talked about that. Here is your justification.
These are the students that attend the cooperative school. Most of them are not at the age of their grade level. Most of them are probably two years older than most of the students in their grade. Absenteeism, MCAS scores, lack in interest in learning and education, DCF or DYS involvement, mental health.
Yeah, it's letting people know what those acronyms stand for.
Department of Youth Services and Family and Child.
Child and family.
Right.
It's the old DSS, has now become DCF.
The, because we bring in the school choice money, and our students are at risk and could cost the system more money if they do not receive their high school diploma, that I feel more money should be invested into these students, where the high school and the middle school per pupil amount is higher than the cooperative school. And really, these students need our support.
Could you elaborate on that? Let's say they don't graduate, but they don't drop out. Is that what you're talking about? In other words, they're retained past the age of eighteen or whatever? Is that what you're?
Well, I'm talking about if they don't receive a high school diploma. You mean if they, they stay and don't receive it?
In other words, they haven't accomplished what's necessary to get a high school diploma. They haven't dropped out, so they're just still there. Is that the kind of problem that you're trying to avoid?
Yes.
Where it would cost the town more money?
Well, it costs, and also if they don't receive the high school diploma and they do drop out.
What percentage of the, of the students have IUPs?
We have probably about ten percent.
Only ten percent? So-
In the day per?
Right.
Higher than that?
Higher than that.
So we're not responsible for these people until age twenty-three?
Some of, some of them, those students who have the IUPs.
So I'm trying to understand what you mean about it's just going to cost the schools-
No, I don't mean the school.
You mean society.
I just mean the society.
Society, got it. Thank you, okay.
It costs more to incarcerate than it does to educate.
Yes.
If I should just add one other point, some of the increases that Kathy has outlined are also a result of our losing a grant. This school was started with seed money from the Department of Ed with a substantial grant. This would be its sixth year, sixth year of operation. So that grant money stayed with us for five years in a decreasing percentage, and we have lost that grant money. Every year, we receive more information, and we have a really strong advocate in the Department of Ed who is trying to find more grant money for us. It is included in Race to the Top as one of the programs that Race to the Top would fund. However, it's listed programmatically, but not in the line items of the budget of Race to the Top yet, so we don't know whether that money will ever come through or not. But that's part of the increases, the, the loss of grant funding. I think, though, and I don't know if Kathy has it at her fingertips, the percentage of students who graduate with a diploma from the cooperative school is, exceeds our expectations because these are students that were or had already dropped out from the high school. So we're, we're rescuing over eighty percent of the students that come into the cooperative.
Those are primarily the PM kids you're talking about.
No, these are day kids as well.
The, the next presentation that'll be on in a second is from West Wareham Academy. And when we have students that come through our system into middle school, and then have difficulty for a number of reasons, what is nice about our community is we have a pathway for success for these students. They can either go to the cooperative school, they can go to West Academy, or they can stay within their own programs at school. So we give them various pathways to be successful. And as Kathy laid out, the kind of students we're talking about are students that would either drop out or would be put out because of disciplinary issues. And the climate and culture of the middle school and the high school is much improved because we have an alternative school to send certain children to. If we didn't have the cooperative school, the same children with the discipline problems who were not successful would be acting out in the other two schools. So I know sometimes if we look at it just from a dollar amount, we might say it's not a program we should have, but from a student's success cost, it is a program that we can't afford not to have. Questions?
Question and comment, but back to parenting. What, is there anything, any hope with parents here with these kids? Is anything done? What, what might be done?
Um, we work to involve the parents. I speak to parents daily. In January, we have a family meeting with all the students. We bring the parents in, and we discuss the student's performance in school. We're, we're still trying to work, I did the school to career, so we're still working on that component as well with the parent. But the parents are involved, maybe not to the extent that we would hope, but-
Kathy, would you say approximately twenty to thirty percent of these children have probation offices?
Yes.
So as far as family, that's already failed them. It is unfortunate, but the school is the only institution left in our society that has the responsibility for taking care of all of our youth.
We are their family. They, they, they're attentive.
Because parents, some parents have abdicated, and I want to say some, not all. All of the institutions that were there before are no longer there, except for the public schools.
Has anybody ever looked, I'm sorry. Has anybody ever looked at, of course, programming is not allowed, so I'm about to ask a question real quick. You may not be able to answer, but let me ask it anyway. Anybody looked at, say, three or four years after the student has graduated from the program or programs, to see where they are? We talked before about the incarcerated.
No, use that.
Are they not in jail? Are they in jail? Are they gainfully employed? And if they're gainfully employed, how are they employed? In other words, some kind of result from their having this opportunity?
I don't have hard data, but I can tell you that since I live in town and read the local newspaper and recognize many of the names in the log, the police log, that would be, the students- the students that should have gone to a program like this that didn't because we didn't have one are the ones that I have seen that have been incarcerated. The students who have gone to this program, who I've seen walk across the stage, are the ones who wind up going to the community, community college, into the service. They've made something of themselves because we've stuck with them that little bit longer to say that we believe in you and that you have a diploma, now you can move on. Before this program, students that didn't fit, and not always because of bad behavior, but just didn't fit, you know, they're the square child that we're trying to put into a round hole. They would drop out. And if you drop out of school and you don't have your education, not all that many people make out well. There are exceptions. But-
I was just going to say too, there's, there's a huge leap from being able to be in a program like this and having nothing. Because we have this, the successive ability to have multiple programs to try to catch kids, hang on to them, and, and that becomes their family in many ways. But if that fails, there is a big jump to what's next. And that's trouble, and it, and it's hard to come back from that point. And we have had kids that have come back to that point and returned to the cooperative school. But that's, to me, the, the black hole that is very, very concerning.
And to speak to that anecdotally, and we, we probably now after five years can start doing more hard data and looking into it, especially as we're looking for more grant money. But one of, anecdotally, every year, we've had students come back because they either heard about the cooperative, they saw an article in the newspaper, or a family member told them. And now at nineteen, twenty, they will come back and through the PM two session, the evening session, so they can keep their day job. Last year, we even had someone give up a day job and switch to a different shift to come to the days session of the cooperative, get their diploma, and move on with, to literally being a positive member of the community and productive member of society. So I think Mr. LaSalle is right that you're talking black hole versus program. When this program began, it was before graduation rate figures were published for the high school. And it was out of that research that I put together the statistics that got us the grant to start this program. We significantly reduced the dropout rate.
May I ask, did we lose the grant this year that is coming there?
Yes, this is the first year we've had no grant. We have a small grant that will-
Well, I mean, it doesn't affect two thousand and twelve, it will affect two thousand and thirteen.
No, it has already affected two thousand and twelve.
Okay.
But we have a small grant called Safe and Supportive Schools that we still have this year. It kind of mitigated some of that. Next year, there are no, no grants.
How much is that?
Safe and supportive schools around twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars.
All right, so we're about half the increase in the teacher salaries line that's here. All right, do we know what the other half of that line is? I'm looking at an increase of fifty thousand dollars for the teacher salaries. Now, I just heard the part of it, twenty two-
We also built a-
Did we add?
Yes, the career. Kathy hasn't, that's the shared position.
Okay, so it's an extra half a position for a job coach.
Okay.
When you look at the bottom line here though, and you see five hundred and twenty-six thousand seventy-seven dollars, that is understated. And the reason it is understated is because two or three positions are paid for through choice. So in other words, the students that, I forget who was asking the question, but somebody asked about children from other districts that come to this school, particularly in our PM evening program. They are choice students. They bring their revenue with them of about six thousand dollars per, if they stay the year. And the reason we have a positive flow of choice money is because of this program. And so we use that money to pay for, like I said, two or three positions. One part of that third position is paid. Makepeace has given us every year since this program has begun a twenty thousand dollar gift towards the salary as well, so that also goes. Last year, and that's exact, that's why, in the salary line, last year, two years ago, we didn't use the gift money that Makepeace gave us. We just put it in the bank. Last year, when the, we took the hit and I had to reduce the budget, I used two years of the gift money. The gift money from the year before and that. So what you see here is twenty thousand dollars, because I only have twenty grand that are coming in to pay for next year's salary, so I had to put twenty grand back in the budget.
Plus the twenty grand lost.
Yes.
That you also had. The other question would be, is I noticed your substitute number is substantially down here, and I imagine there's a reason for that.
There is. This is a program that somewhat judged by being able to keep the lid on. These are youngsters that are very volatile. And when a new principal came in before Kathy, and I was aware that one of his staff was going out for an extended, had back surgery, I allowed him two permanent building subs. Two people that came every day. Because this population can't take a different person coming in to try to cover the class. They need to know who the substitute is. So whether we have a teacher out or not, Kathy can have that sub there that helps her with her in-school suspension program, roaming the hallways, all things that are more important in an institution like this than in the regular school. So we had two, we're down to one, and that's why the reduction. It isn't that people are absent less.
Yeah, it's a matter of consistency is what you're saying. And you can't bring anybody into the environment at random, because it may not-
Correct.
Okay.
We have great teacher attendance too.
Ah, yeah.
Thank God.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Kathy very much.
Just to put Kathy's comment in perspective, Bureau of Labor Statistics says that if you graduate from college, at the moment, you're likely to be unemployed at a five percent rate. If you graduate from high school, you're likely to be unemployed at a ten percent rate. If you don't graduate from high school, it jumps to fifteen, literally five percent increments. So to say that getting a high school diploma has real economic impact is very clear.
Well, we're at the, part of the program to talk about West Wareham Academy. And if you see a tear coming down Anna's eye, it's because this was where, when she was the dearest principal, she had her kindergarten children at the West Wareham School, Elementary School. And we transitioned it, because of a budget cut, we closed West Wareham for a year and East Wareham. The following year after they were closed for a year, we reopened them. And West Wareham became the West Wareham Academy as a point four I program, which in special education speak, talks about an in-district program to meet the needs of a particular population of students that would have gone out to out-of-district schools. So every child that is in this building would have been going to a collaborative or private school, and we would be paying a tuition of between forty and sixty thousand dollars, as well as we would have to have more special needs transportation costs to get them there and back. So Bob put together this program under the Student Needs Program. And we have our director, and we have our coordinator of special education here. So Wendy, Miranda, why don't you introduce Stacy and-
Okay, this is Stacy Rogers. She's the Director of Special Education. We work hand in hand over at West. West Academy, as Barry said, is a, it's a therapeutic program. We service students who have IEPs, who struggle with significant social, emotional disabilities. West Academy was put together basically to have our children be educated here in town instead of servicing them out of the district, to be able to service our kids here in town. And that way, our kids would still be part of our community, be able to participate in extracurricular activities at the, at the high school or the middle school level. And also as a way to help reduce out-of-district costs. Because out-of-district costs were rising, so we put together the program to help reduce that.
On your large document, it's on page fifteen of seventeen, is where you'll find the academy or West Wareham Academy.
So in creating this budget, I had three budget objectives. And the first objective was to maintain and support our district initiatives for instruction and assessments in order to impact our student achievement. My second objective was to provide the instructional materials to support the twenty-first century learning for career and workforce readiness. And my third goal was to manage the maintenance costs of an aging building. So if you can see the first, the first page, there are a few line items, several line items that I have increased. The first line item would be the office supplies account. Increase that, I'm asking to increase that by four hundred dollars based on the actual expenditures that we had for FY twelve. The coordinator account was a new account that was added. West Academy did not have this account. The other schools do have a principal's account. So that was a new account that was added. The contracted therapeutic service is our contract with the Walker Partnership. And this, this line item is for our behavior specialist interventionist. So I asked for an increase of five percent due to anticipated cost from the vendor. Textbook account, I asked for five hundred dollars based on purchasing some common text and informational text that align with the new middle school and high school scope and sequence to support the common core. Instructional technology, I asked for an increase of seven hundred dollars based on supporting a new technology in our science classroom, the digital microscope. We're trying to expand our science program. This year, we've added a physics course at West. The next line item that I'm asking for an increase is contracted social worker. That is our therapist, our clinician, who is also a partner from the Walker School. And that, that would be a five percent increase based on the anticipated increase from the vendor. And our therapist, therapists and guidance supplies accounts, I'm asked for five hundred dollars for resources needed to teach coping strategies, conflict resolution, and anger management skills. Our therapist runs individual counseling groups and group, and group counseling. And our special ed clerical supplies, we've added that account, asking for three hundred dollars just based on supporting compliance of special ed regulations of shredding paper and important documents, legal documents. Also, our contracted psychologist service, it's also a partner with the Walker. He is our consultant that comes monthly and consults with our staff and meets with our students. He's partnered with the Walker. That's a five percent increase based on the anticipated increase of the vendor. The next line item would be other student activity account. This account is increased by one thousand six hundred dollars. It's based on actual expenditures of two hundred dollars per month needed to increase transitional vocational experiences, therapeutic incentives that align with our behavior modification program, and resources and supplies needed to support our school store. We have a financial literacy course and an experienced learning class. And to be able to run those classes efficiently, I'm requesting the extra funding. And the next line item would be the building maintenance. As you know, that our building is aging. So I've asked for an increase of four thousand five hundred dollars based on the maintenance and upkeep. We also have a need to do some power washing and remove existing mold from the exterior part of the building, paint the bricks and the trim and the doors before it actually becomes a, a larger problem with the mold spreading. Computer maintenance account also is a new account for three hundred dollars just to support our, our aging technology of computers in the building, help fix them if there's a problem with them. Copier and lease account, it was an increase based on the vendor. So those would be the accounts that I'm requesting an additional funding for.
Wendy, just to give a quick clarification-
Sure.
On the therapeutic services account, it, it shows on the page that folks have in front of them is a difference of fifty-seven thousand four eighteen. But in fact, it was, that account was paid for through other sources, grants and so forth, in FY twelve. However, that has been funded within the LEA budget previously. So when you mentioned that increase of five percent, you're, you're showing it in relationship to what was paid last year.
To what was paid.
It was just paid out of a different source rather than LEA. And then when you talked about the, we've talked about several Walker Partnership folks, and there is that one account in the five thousand dollar range, site contracted services, twenty-eight hundred oh four, that is actually a psychiatrist. This program is, is very rare in that the, the level of need of the students in the program often require that we have a psychiatrist consult. So we have Dr. Livingston, who actually comes onsite and does a psychiatric consult. So as opposed to social workers and school psychologists, this is actually a psychiatrist that consults directly to the program.
Questions that you have about the West Wareham Academy? Or Mrs. Miranda?
By the way, I have to come back to the salaries are up twenty-four percent. Give me a quick explanation.
Uh, let's see, West Wareham salaries.
Do they have to tie them down?
Yep.
Going from one hundred eleven to one hundred and thirty-eight?
Twenty-six thousand dollar increase. Was that an Edu jobs, do we know, or a, one of those?
I believe that our funds were picking up more salaries out of the IDEA era for special ed, which all that money's gone. So we've had to build back salaries that had been previously paid for.
So that's part of the federal, lost a federal grant.
Lost federal grant, okay. Unfunded main bids? Thank you.
I assume, I assume that there are transportation, maybe I'm missing it here, that there are transportation costs for children that are brought by bus?
They're, they're all in, in district buses, that's correct. And then the, there is also a, but a van, a seven D van that we purchased and we use for, for services during the day to try to reduce those costs. But they are within the O two accounts in, in the transportation budget.
So it's in the transportation budget, it's not part of this budget?
Right. So those are accounted within the five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars that's charged to special education and transportation.
I'd be kind of curious if, if you know off the top of your head as to how much of the transport, what, of, of the five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, how much goes to this particular program, this particular school?
I can get you the figure, I don't have it, but it's relatively small.
It's, it's relatively small. Because we only have, what do we have, thirteen, sixteen children?
How many?
Sixteen.
Oh, sixteen, okay.
And it's one bus.
That picks them all up?
Yes.
Okay.
Just as a comment. One of the conundrums, so to speak, for the school committee is this whole area of grants. And by that, I mean, let me categorize them in two different ways. One would be, we apply for a grant, we get the grant. It seems to be generating significant value, and then the grant disappears. And we have a choice of either funding it through the LEA, the local operating budget, or having it disappear. You could argue that if it, we suddenly decide it has to be funded through the operating budget- You could argue that if it, we suddenly decide it has to be funded through the operating budget, we have, so to speak, mission creep, or whatever term you wanna use that's somewhat pejorative. But in the end, it's, it's an educational decision, um, that is very, very difficult. And that's part of the problem with grants. Then the second type of grant you have is, we're doing something through the normal operating budget. Then the government comes along, specifically the federal government in most cases, they decide they're gonna help out with one-time things, or maybe spread over two or three years. And they give us money that we are already using through our, our normal operating budget. Two or three years goes by, it disappears, and then oops, now we have to fund it again through the normal operating budget. Both of those situations are really awkward. You could argue that almost any grant that has the potential to disappear should be used for something that is a one-time event, to protect yourself from exactly that kind of situation. That would be fine if our normal level of funding from the state was meeting our needs. But instead, what we, what it's used for is a Band-Aid on a more overall problem, which we already talked about earlier today. So that's, that's my little anecdote about grants.
And Jeff, may I add that the grants also dictate, uh, many times what we have to spend the money on.
Yeah, there's two-
It's not like we have choices.
There are two kinds of grants too, there's supplemental grants and the, and supplanting. In one case, you can actually use it to replace operating funds, and in other cases, you can't. That's a whole nother dimension to the grant problem.
So, any other questions for Wendy? Or Stacy?
I was gonna just ask, follow up, I'm sorry. Grant money was here, it's here, over that timeframe, one, two, three, four, five years. What, how's it's changed?
Funny you should ask. Bob, in the next slide, set of slides, has a picture to show you that.
Hold that thought. Here's the song. More to come.
What a segue. Thank you ladies. Uh, Stacy's gonna stay. And I will try to move us on to-
Thank you Wendy.
Thank you.
See, it wasn't as bad as you thought.
Yeah, see?
Little trip.
Didn't you want her to present the next one too?
I'm not quite ready for that, I'll see you in ten years.
Okay, there we go.
So, I've been presenting the student services budget, and this first graphic just shows you some of the, the pieces of student services, and I'm gonna break that down a little bit proportionately for you in a minute. Uh, but this is really what encompasses the, the Department of Student Services. Sort of from, from thirty thousand feet, um-
Fifty.
Fifty.
Fifty thousand maybe.
Okay, we'll, we'll give it fifty. I think it's, well, you can tell me whether it's fifty or not. But I've, I've given you a breakdown of, of the, the budget and how much is spent in each of the areas. The areas being that the, um, this largest area is the special ed in-district portion of the expenses in student services. This is the out-of-district, uh, portion of that. This is the, um, let me go over to, this is the student services part that includes things like nursing services, homeless services, any foster services that we provide, but anything having to do with student services other than special education. That's the three hundred and seventy-three thousand four ninety-three. Five eighty-nine is non-net, but that's what our, oh, these are the O-two accounts within transportation.
So that answers part of Dix. So all of the transportation that has to do with special education comes out to that five eighty-nine, four fifty.
So if you look in your transportation portion of your budget, you'll see a number of O-two accounts, and that's the total. And, um, two hundred and seventeen in administrative and clerical. This chart is just looking at in-district special education allocations by building. So to give you an idea of the amounts of money that are distributed, um, there. So for the high school, we have twenty percent of the budget. The middle school, nineteen percent. Nine percent goes to West Wareham Academy. Deccus is nineteen percent, sixteen percent for Minnetonka. Three percent for Hammond, and fourteen percent for East. So this is, and again, this is only the in-district costs. This excludes the student services portion that I mentioned earlier, and it also excludes out-of-district, uh, costs.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
From the prior slide, I got eight point three million dollars. If that's the numerator, what is the correct denominator to use to calculate the percentage of dollars going to special ed?
The percent? Um, I would take the eight point three less the three seventy-three.
Why would I subtract the three seventy-three?
Because it's student services, not special ed. It's ti- it's, it's foster, homeless, nursing services, guidance services.
Three hundred and seventy-three thousand?
Correct.
All right, call it eight million then.
Right.
Okay, so eight million, and what's the denominator?
This year's budget, that the budget, we've asked for twenty-seven million in the LEA. That, that is, excludes transportation.
So-
Excuse me, I was sent over here to get a bag and a notebook that Derek, over the administration of town hall left.
Right over here.
And some keys.
So is, so that's the denominator excluding transportation and excluding grants, correct? Correct?
I'm sorry, I'm-
That's the, yeah, I understand. That's the denominator which excludes transportation and excludes, uh, grants, correct?
Yes, the, um, twenty-seven million one ninety-five three seventy, which for, is the net school spending, which is, does not have any transportation money in it.
Okay, so if we do that, what we get is twenty-nine percent of the spending for about twenty percent of the children? Just to put that in perspective.
You, you pulled out transportation, Jeff?
Yes.
Yep.
I don't know if you, if you pulled it out from the other side, because there was a five hundred thousand-
Right, five eighty-nine.
-that he said was transportation out of his eight million. So it's really probably seven point five.
Why should I pull it out of that, because it's transportation?
Because we don't, we, we're not using it as part of our denominator, that's why.
It's not part of the twenty-seven.
Well, if that, yeah, I see your point, but those are uniquely special education transportation costs.
They are, but they're not included in this total figure. So if you're doing a-
So if anything, I should put the transportation back?
You could put it back in both, and then, and then it's-
Yeah, and I never deleted it from the first.
So, it is, the total number for the budget, um, is twenty-eight million, seven eighty, six forty-seven. That includes the transportation.
Twenty-eight million what?
Seven hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and forty-seven.
All right, so it's twenty-eight percent instead of twenty-nine percent, okay.
I'll take every percent.
Okay, thanks.
I'm on the hot seat. Okay.
Are we ready for the next slide?
Yep. So, within the special education budget, I've, I've only highlighted, um, any, any lines that have variances in them that are fairly substantial in the eight to ten percent or more range. And I've included the justifications with it. So briefly, the, the, there's a twenty-nine hundred dollar increase in regular education home instruction. That's non-special, students with special needs, without special needs rather, who may need to have home instruction for a variety of reasons, they broke their leg skiing, there's some sort of a disorder that's preventing them to, from coming to school. And that is based simply on our FY eleven spending that we've needed to increase that line. We have an ELE-
This is dismissal at the middle school. Remember these young adults between the ages of eleven and thirteen have been made to sit and be quiet all day. Now is the first time they get to move, so don't mind the noises, that's just youth in exuberance.
And when we, we leave, we can do the same thing?
Absolutely.
So in mind, Dick.
And note that if you're talking and you think that you can't be heard, please talk louder, because I'd have you up as loud as I can put you.
Me?
Anybody.
Oh, okay. Okay, the second line, the ELE teacher salary. This is a position that has been funded through ARA for the past two years, and we needed to put it in the budget. This came out of our coordinated program review and, and a requirement to corrective action that we have an English learner education coordinator slash teacher in place, and that's, that's what that figure is for. Uh, ARA has taken care of it for two years, but now we have to have it in the budget. Relatedly, there's thirty-five hundred dollars cumulatively for professional development materials and teaching supplies for that position. There is a slight increase of twenty-seven hundred dollars in clerical as a result of, of needing to move some grant funds over to the LEA because there were insufficient funds to, to capture that twenty-seven hundred dollars. Student, uh, services, supplies and instructional materials and devices, a fi- roughly a five thousand dollar increase. This is student-specific equipment. We have some children, children who have very specific needs for, for equipment that is very costly. Specialized kinds of walkers and standers and technical technology that, that, this is just based on what our spending is for those specialized pieces of equipment. Student services, contracted services was quite low last year. We were able to do that because of, and you'll see in a few minutes, the amount of other funding that we had, grants, grants and, and other sources. We were funded at a hundred and three thousand the prior year. We're asking for ninety-seven thousand, so our FY twelve year was a respite, but our real numbers tend to be around a hundred thousand dollars for that line for these contracts. These contracts include, uh, for example, speech and language therapists, a board-certified behavior analyst who, uh, does specialized kinds of things for us. But this, the majority of this, the vast majority of this are for people who work with kids, and we, we need to restore that back to a, a higher number. We have extended school year services. There is a requirement in the law that any child who may experience substantial regression when there's an extended absence from school, uh, they, we need to provide services. We provide an extensive summer program servicing about a hundred and twenty-five kids. And, uh, that's the source of funds that pays for salaries and materials and so forth for that summer program. Next slide. High school teacher salaries, we have asked for an increase of one full-time, uh, teacher to have, uh, and to continue our services for autistic children. We have had a bubble, uh, it's more than a bubble. We've had a substantial increase in the number of children with autism, as is experienced all over the country. And our services at the high school level do not provide adequate services for those children with autism. Two years ago, we, we added a person at the middle school, a program at the middle school to service those children. Those children are getting older, and it's time for them to move on to the middle school, to the high school, as we have children continuing to come through from our preschool on up to our elementary program, our middle program. And this is really to expand that high school, uh, program to be able to do that. You see a fifteen thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollar increase to Deccus paraprofessionals. There's actually a decrease in other lines to offset the majority of that. That's simply a transfer of a paraprofessional from one of the other schools over to Deccus, so their paraprofessional line is increasing. Uh, Minnetonka special, uh, sped therapist salaries, there is, this is partially because of a realignment and also redistribution of funds. We have done a very, very good thing, I think, by hiring several occupational therapy assistants and speech and language assistants to work with kids at a far lesser expense than our fully certified speech pathologists and occupational therapists. So there's more services for kids with less money, but we pulled money out of contracted services to make that happen, as well as, um, out of, uh, out of the teacher line because of a reduction in the cost for, as retirements have happened, uh, we've been able to hire for lesser amounts of money. Uh, the middle school paraprofessional salary, uh, this is again, one that is returning to, uh, LEA funding. I would, however, that number for paraprofessionals at the middle school has gone down. In fact, we were, we were funded at two hundred and twenty-two thousand five thirty-four in fiscal year eleven, we went down substantially to one fifty-three, in part because of grant funding, and now we need to bring that up to one sixty-three nine thirty-five. Uh, the next two lines, uh, special, sped tuitions to private schools and collaborative schools, I'll take together. One shows an increase of four hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Um, that is to service thirty students, and I have factored in a six percent increase in tuitions for private schools, as I have for the collaborative program as well. There is a decrease of ninety-three thousand four oh two for collaborative programs.
Bless you.
If you go to the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about out-of-district, um, expenses and how that, uh, is, is funded. This slide shows you actually, over the last five years, what the real costs for out-of-district have been. When you look at that four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar increase, you would think, what are they doing? We have so many more kids, um, that are being serviced out of the district. The fact is that we have thirty students that are, that are, um, are given their education out of district. That's one percent of our population has to go out of district to get their education. You'll also see that between the years oh nine and, and anticipated thirteen, we've gone from one point eight five, eight six five million dollars in oh nine to two million oh six oh, or an increase of a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars over five years. When we factor in a six percent, which is a very modest expectation of increase based on what rate setting does with the tuitions for these out-of-district programs, just for the current year, that would be a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars at six percent that would be increased. If we were to take a six percent increase for each of those five years, so if we just took the one eighty, one million six, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand in oh nine, we added six percent to that figure, and we took that figure for ten and added six percent to that, and so forth and so on, until we get to, to, um, two thousand thirteen, the money that we would be asking for just for increases in tuitions would be two million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So, how did we make that happen, that we're not asking for two point three five five million? It's because we have brought kids back to the district. We've been able to, to manage that number in a way that we're, we're able to continue to reduce the, the cost based on those increases from what it could be if, if we in fact had those six percent per year increases in, in amounts. But the bottom line is that we have a five-year increase of a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. The reason why there is the variation, if we go to the next slide, is that a major funding source, our real bills are two point five million, let's, roughly. You can see from oh nine to thirteen, these, this, the darker figure is the circuit breaker figures that we've received back year to year. And you can see that we've hit, um, anywhere from four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in oh nine. That number dropped to three eighteen in ten, two seventy-four in eleven, two ninety-nine in twelve. And our, uh, circuit breaker that we'll have available to us in thirteen is four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. However, in, in twelve, we had this opportunity to carry over an amount of money, um, for, of three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars from our IDEA. We basically held that money in reserve, because we knew that we were gonna be in trouble this current year. We held that money in reserve from FY eleven into FY twelve, which brought our out-of-district costs substantially lower, because we had six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So we had real bills, as I mentioned in the prior slide, for the current year. We had real, real bills of two point one million dollars, but we have only budgeted, uh, in, we have in the current budget, s- something under one million dollars to be able to pay for that. We were able to do that something because we had these additional funds with us, available to us. I'm sorry, it's one point three million dollars that we have in the current. So, they take the one point three and the six hundred and twenty-two, and we're able to pay the bills based on that. However, it, it now leaves us with an FY thirteen, four hundred and, um, we have this difference of, particularly in the private school placement. The other thing that happens, and, and, you know, this is a card game for special ed directors all over the country, and that is, I'm planning today for somebody who may come into the district in, say, March of two thousand thirteen. We had that situation last year. We sat and talked about budget for the very first time. That morning, we received a phone call that we were having a child move in from another district, $260,000 placement. So the figures that you see include any increases that we've had, any anticipated increases, not only in students, but also in their costs. Okay. Let me go on to East, and similarly, I'm going to talk about the.
Do you perhaps want to take questions on your student service portion at special ed before we go into East?
I will tell you, I'm going to do one final section after East on grants and grant amounts, so you might want to hold on to.
Do you want to have him finish East, and then ask more questions? Any?
We can say thank you very much, and I'll get up.
Frank, do you have a particular?
I'm going to have to go over this. I got lost on the second page of numbers.
Okay.
Okay, so should he?
The way they're located in the budget.
All right, so should he do East, and then, all right, we'll do East.
And let me just say something, Frank. I'm all over the budget because the in-district costs are attached to each of the schools, so there's a little bit of me in every one of the schools, but every, the fourth digit in the sequence, the O2 accounts are all my accounts.
Okay, that's probably what, I figured that's what you were doing, so I said I was going to have to go back. I figure it's in there, you're trying to give a little picture of your function, but we've already covered parts of it.
Right.
Okay. Nobody gave us the page numbers, I see you have them.
Yes, that's why.
That's why.
Right, there is a cluster on page three.
I think what Barry wanted to say was go East, Young Man, Louie's.
All right. East, really, there's just a few lines that are either up or down, and there is, there are some offsets. So that first set, you see a decrease of $4,000 for custodial supplies and an increase of $3,500 for sped custodial supplies. It was just a change of accounts. We moved that from a regular account to a special ed account. The net difference is a $500 decrease. The East Coordinator's salary, you heard earlier from Joan that there's a restructuring of the administration of East. The result of that is that there was the creation of a new line, the East Coordinator's salary of $55,373. You will also note that in 2801, there's a decrease of $42,292. So we took $42,000 of the $55 and subtracted it from one line. The balance of that amount is coming from, partially from an increase, well, fully an increase, but we had to take a piece of what was formerly paid for through a grant and move that over. So there's a net increase of about $13,000 for that coordinator when you do all of that math. The special ed substitute teachers and the special ed paraprofessional substitute lines, there's a net increase of $8,000. That's based on FY11's spending.
Actuals.
The actual spending, yeah. There was a $3,000 increase in East textbooks and AV supplies. The reason for that is that they would like to purchase a program called Everyday Math for preschoolers, and this is part of early intervening, trying to get our preschoolers who are at risk online with the math program that's already in place for the elementary schools and to give them a jump start. There is an $863 increase in East preschools pencils and paper. That simply was a correction. We had one year that that was at zero. It's formally been funded at, pretty consistently, around the $800 figure. That seems to be enough to do what it needs to for that line. East software and guidance and testing supplies, there is an increase of, again, combined about $1,500, and that's really in part to restore FY11 funding. There is software that's necessary for some of the early intervening programs that need to be purchased as well. There also are some testing programs, and that's thus the guidance portion of it, to be able to fund, to be able to complete some of the requirements for testing. Substitute custodians and overtime, again, this was an adjustment of a net of about $4,800 based on FY11 actual spending. So that concludes East. The next several slides are around revenue streams. And what I've given you is an eight-year comparison of the various grants that are funded through the Student Services Office. The current total of grants through the Student Services Office this year is $1,924,482. The reason you see a substantial increase, two reasons you see a substantial increase this year is that we are managing the Title I grant after not having done that for a few years, and we also have the IDEA carryover. I mentioned that earlier as a funding source that we use this current year for out-of-district placements. That was an amount of $367,222. The big grants that you see there are, in this FY12, are Title I and the IDEA grant, both entitlements. IDEA is $762,924. When I take all of those grants and add them together, they pay for 27.35 FTEs. Those are professional and paraprofessional, as well as clerical positions, but the FTEs is 27.35. You can see the, by the, well, actually, if you go to the next slide, Barry. I took one of the grants, this is the IDEA grant, which is in the amount of $762,924. And you can see that the bottom section here, here we are in FY12, this is instructional staff. The green is non-instructional staff. The purple is fringe benefits, and the blue is contractual services. Contractual services, again, are positions, they're just positions that are not employees of the district. We contract with those folks and don't pay their benefits and so forth and so on. So there is absolutely no supply money left, which is a huge concern, no administrative costs that come out of the grant. It is purely for positions. You'll see as you go across the years that there are variances in the size of these pieces of the bar. The reason for that is that we hit points where either the fringe benefits or adjustments to salary are greater than what our allocation is, and we don't get our allocation until probably late May or June. So we're budgeting now based on our anticipated amounts of money on these allocation grants, but what we find is that they tend to stay about the same, or they shrink a little bit as they shrunk this past year. And if there's a lane and step increase for salaries, we find that we get squeezed, and every so often, I've had to move a position from the grant back into the LEA budget. Next slide. Shows you, I just gave you the distribution of the Title I grant, and again, that amount for Title I is... Sorry. Really just give myself a chance to breathe. That grant is $638,595. The red area, 47% of it, is instructional staff, 9% of it is paraprofessional staff, 9% of it is fringe benefits, 23% of it is contracted services, and 6% is administration, and 6% is instructional materials. Within this contracted services, you've heard several times about supplemental educational services, or SES. You've heard both Chris and Joan talk about additions for tutoring within their budgets. So this is one of the sources, along with the CARE grant, that we're trying to figure out how we can provide tutoring for all children, not just children who have needs because of income levels or special education, but for all children. So SES, supplemental educational services, is part of Title I, and that contracted service line reflects that piece of the Title I grant. And then the last slide, I think, maybe two more. I'm sorry, next one is the circuit breaker breakdown, and again, this is simply showing you the amounts of money that are there through circuit breaker at different years this year. We have $430,000 available, but that number has ranged anywhere from a high of $480,000 in '05 to a low of $274,000 in FY10. So again, in terms of planning for budgeting purposes, the numbers vary a great deal, and so sometimes we need to adjust with the LEA budget. And the last slide that I've provided you with is an eight-year look at Medicaid reimbursements to the town of Wareham. As Dick knows very well, there was a change in the Medicaid to schools program, or school-based Medicaid claiming, as it's called now, on July 1 of 2009. They changed the formula, changed the process. We jumped on with an electronic billing service that has worked out very well, and in fact, for that service, we've been notified that Wareham was the highest receivable per student, per eligible student of any district in the state that is serviced by this company. So you see for 2010, 2011, an amount of $298,851. We had probably 40 or 50 emails going back and forth, trying to figure out what the right number should be, adjusting for this new Medicaid billing program. We said $250, we ended up with $298, so we weren't too far off the mark. But Medicaid reimbursements over this eight-year period has amounted for a total of $3,406,49 that goes directly to the town. We're hoping for, trying to maintain about the same number that we have this current year, but if I were asked what you should plan for, I would say about $225,000. I would drop it by about $25,000. And my reason for that is that there is something called the cost adjustment that is done. We received $133,000 for cost adjustment. Basically, what this is, is saying, okay, if you're going to provide speech therapist services to an eligible student, we're going to reimburse you $3 a unit for that speech and language service. At sort of towards the end of the fiscal year, we're going to have a cost adjustment, and we're going to look at the pool of money that we have as a state for Medicaid, school-based Medicaid claiming, and we may adjust that figure to $6. So we may adjust it not at all, but we may adjust it to $10, and then we're going to give you all of that money at one time. The key is you have to have done the billing upfront to make sure that you're available to get the cost adjustment, and many districts didn't do that this year. They just said, well, we're just going to see how this thing goes. So we got $133,000 out of that. If more districts are on board next year, they, you know, that cost adjustment pool may be less than it was this past year. So that's why I'm suggesting that we think about two and a quarter. That's it.
Questions for the Student Services Department Director and the Coordinator of Special Education?
Analysis paralysis.
I thought you were going to say you did such a good job.
It's that it's so late in the afternoon, you've had so many numbers come at you.
That's right. Tomorrow morning, I'll probably call you.
I had one question, and that was that you had some flexibility, as I understand it, this year because you were able to save some money from a prior year, and you kind of doubled up. Do you have any similar pockets of money that I can kind of visit you about?
You can come visit, Dick, but there's no, no, you know, I've been doing special ed administration for 11 years now. We've never been able to carry over the entitlement grant, the IDEA grant. During the ERA period, they said, yeah, you know what, we want you to spend ERA first. And you can carry over IDEA. So we said, okay, we put it all into ERA, we put it in a pocket. We spent very little, you know, but well, not very little, we spent about half of the grant that year. We saved half the grant so we could carry it over to this year, and that's, and really, the one place, the two places that it chose, but the one major place is in out-of-district. We budgeted in the LEA much, much less than our bills. Our bills were 2.1, and our LEA, you know, money was 1.3. So we don't have, we don't have money to carry over. I know.
How do you judge your, what are your indicators of success?
Indicators of success for, I mean, I've just. For all of special education?
For the investment that you're required to make and that you're asking the town to make.
Yeah, well, I think the special education part of it is a little bit different in that the indicators are very individual by IEPs and the progress monitoring part of, that's built into the IEP process. Beyond that, Jeff, to me, an indicator.
But an IEP is a plan.
It's a plan, but it's also a progress monitoring set of things that require, for example, evaluation and comparative evaluation, not only every three-year cycle when a full evaluation's required, a full reevaluation, but also twice, at least twice a year, there needs to be an assessment of goals, of progress on the goals of the IEP and the child's readiness to terminate from services based on the progress that they've made. So I think that those are valid indicators of whether students are making progress in their IEPs.
So can you objectively measure your success against the plans?
I think as objectively as you can with a combination of data for academic progress and objectives, narrative around, and to many, to some extent, the rubrics around behavioral change for kids, for example.
When I was on the Board of Directors of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, it was heresy to actually say to them, how do we know, and I was a significant contributor to them, how do we know that what we're doing actually matters, works? So I suggested to them that, you know, if someone's incarcerated at the end of their experience with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, we could probably call that, you know, a failure. If someone was an independent adult, we could call that a success, okay? And if we were more successful than if they hadn't interacted with us, then we could say, aha, we made an investment and it paid off. That's, we could collect that data. It was just, the idea of collecting that data was heresy because everybody said, wow, mentoring, I mean, that's, obviously, that's a good thing to be doing. It feels good. Yeah, right. I didn't buy that, as you might gather. You're mandated to do certain things, but putting that aside, besides the feel-good aspect of trying to help kids that are struggling, do you have any way of saying, measuring the degree to which you are succeeding in the IEPs for which you're responsible? Are you 80% successful? Are you 70? Are you 60, 90?
But again, I will go back to the IEP simply because the data, the hard data.
I'm referring to the IEP.
The hard data would be in the evaluative data. Has this child in a year's time made, for children with IEPs that are educational, academic IEPs, has that year's time?
That is what we're here for, academics, right?
Well, I'm not going to be naive about this and answer you and say, yes, we're only here for academics.
I'm sorry, the only reason we play a social service function is because we're forced to play a social service function. In a perfect world, we would just be about education.
I'm, and I'm all for it. The reality, though, because every day, we have to walk into reality, not, okay, so.
But every day.
Okay, so the reality, but I want to answer your question. The reality is that the interference that children have in their academic performance often comes from things like behavioral interference. The reality is that children who have.
But that's why you get more resources.
But you asked me a question, how do I measure progress? I cannot answer your question without saying that the answers come in different stages or different formats for different kids. So it's easy, it's easier when you can say, okay, does this child in a year's time make more than a year's academic growth, especially when they're two or three or four years behind? That part's pretty easy. I think the mechanisms are in place for that. Where it gets more complicated is if you have a child, for example, who has been in an out-of-district placement, failing in that out-of-district placement, and doesn't have a snowball's chance to be able to get back into and be with other kids and enjoy the energy and the money and the expertise that we put into our own programs, and we can't get. can't get them back there, that's a failure to me. When we have only one percent of our kids, when all the districts around us have at least two or three percent of their kids receiving their services out of district, and they have no control over hiring, evaluation, the curriculum and so forth and so on in those private placements, I do see that as success because those kids are graduating from our schools. You saw West Wareham Academy last year, we had graduates from West Wareham Academy that otherwise wouldn't. You sat on the stage of Wareham Cooperative School, and those kids graduated. To me, those-
Those are feel-good moments.
I disagree.
And I'm not immune to feeling-
But I disagree. You seem as feel-good. I see them as indicators of success.
No, they can't be objectively, not scientifically, because we don't know whether they would have been successful otherwise.
No, but that's the end result. The question is, how do you measure success? And one of the measures, to me, is making sure that we're doing a good job programmatically to be able to provide services to as many kids as we possibly can. One percent's a great number. So in order for us to be able to-
How do I know you're doing a better job than another school district? Not with respect to saving money, which is near and dear to my heart, and I suspect members of the Finance Committee as well.
I'm seeing twinges all over the place.
Okay. And that's not unimportant, and I know that's part of your role, that's cost effectiveness role. But if I want to market based on quality, okay, to a parent, okay, how can I differentiate what's happening in Wareham from what's happening in any other school district based on some measurable, objective data? Is there a way to do that?
And I, based on, going back to the ed plan, my answer is yes, for academic advancement, for progress in the academic program. For the access to those programs, it's going to come from how well we're programming. I have to be a programmer as well as an educator. The reality is, that's what I've got to do to be successful. And in order for kids to be successful, those programs need to be in place. If you're seventeen and you're in Wareham, you're in a very good spot in terms of being able to have academic programming, that you're going to be able to make academic achievement. And the measures are in place, whether it's the grade systems, MCAS, whether it's the formative assessments. I mean, I think that every time we allow a child back into our district, all of the things that you hear all along the way about the different assessment things that we're doing, professional development, all of the pieces that we do with our staff are then available to that kid. As soon as I'm able, as soon as I have to say, you can no longer come to Wareham, I have no control over those things, nor do any of the other people in this room.
I think we're talking past each other. With respect, I say that, and I think you know that. I just don't know how to get what I need in order to feel comfortable with the investment, putting aside that I know a tremendous piece of it is mandated anyway. But I'm, part of what every school committee member does is sells to parents the services that we offer, when almost thirty percent of the money is going to a program that is by its very nature specialized. I would like to have a comfort level that I just can't get. No matter how much I may respect the two of you and others that are associated with the IEP part of the academics, I still just get it, it's just a black hole.
Then I think part of my answer, Jeff, is that I would love to have a chance to show you what I'm talking about. Because if a student is struggling, these are at-risk kids, they're all at-risk kids. Part of my job is to get them to the point that they're not struggling. Because at the end of the day, I would agree that the academic gains that they make-
You're missing my point. I know you've got, I know you've, and I don't want to take any more time, but the bottom line is, there are kids struggling all over. I'm looking for relative performance. How do I know that if they go to you and Stacy, they're going to be more successful than if they go to somewhere else? Or are they going to be less successful? All other things being equal. And I don't know the answer to that question, and that causes me discomfort.
And my suggestion to you is that-
You can't show me. You can't.
I don't know how to answer you then.
So we'll give that some time to percolate on both sides of the equation. And thank you very much. And now for Curriculum and Instruction and Assessments.
Yes, I'm part of Curriculum and Instruction. Someone mentioned earlier about analysis paralysis, so I've handed out something that has no numbers on it and no analysis, and I will come back to it at the end as an overview. What I am presenting to you is purposefully headed as the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. Curriculum and Instruction is the department that we call Wareham Public Schools Education. We work with our teachers, and I am most proud to tell you that every effort that comes through my office is done in conjunction with teacher committees, teacher consultation, and administrator's consultation. For, this is my eighth year in being in the district. We are able, because of the leadership of our superintendent, to not only have business meetings, but to have meetings totally focused on curriculum and instruction. And as Dr. Rubinovich said, that includes assessment, and that is part of instruction. I want to start by looking at the line items of the budget that are under the direction of me and my office. And very briefly, I'm going to go through the line items, give you a little bit of history, talk a little bit about the Everett Center, and then come to the diagram that I handed out.
So Jan, I believe, is going to be-
Start page one.
Bottom of page one, where it says Everett Curriculum, and then moving on to the next page.
And we jump over to account twelve as well. So I'm going to highlight here on the first slide, you will see slides and materials, supplies and materials for professional development. This also includes supplies and materials for curriculum. Specific curriculum needs in the buildings that are going to support current curriculum alignment will be purchased through this line item. We have kept it level, and because most of the increases come in the school budgets themselves. And this is to support teacher training. More importantly, it's to support the alignment of the curriculum with the state and national standards. And I will get into this in more detail. Staff development, this is huge. We are not only mandated, but we are required by professional standards to maintain a trained staff, to provide, number one, a mentoring program for new teachers, to provide ongoing coaching and support through our training in studying skillful teacher, which is a course that we offer all teachers in the district in their first three years. We also provide ongoing coaching and training as curriculum demands change, as state assessments change. We provide training in analyzing those assessments, both the state assessments and our local assessments, so that instruction can be adjusted to meet students' needs. Curriculum and other expenditures, this is support for conferences, this is support for consultations. It is also membership in various regional and state networks. The next three lines are particularly near and dear to my heart and to honors as well. This is curriculum supplementary programs. We have stipends, supplies, and other expenses. This provides for our Destination Imagination Program. This is probably our most active enrichment program beyond the classroom, where we have student teams who compete in research and design. And this year, the increases go to supporting an expanded global education program. This was the Sister City Project. It is, we now have our own district team called the Global Education Team, and we're working to build up that team. And you can access some information about what's happening in global education through our website. Next slide. The next slide really focuses on the Everett Building. The Everett Education Center is one of the oldest buildings in the district. I'd have to look at years as to compare it to West, but they're pretty close.
Hammond might have you beat, too.
Hammond, wow.
But you're real close. You're real close.
Everett is a building that we are keeping online. We are using it. Both Mr. Luzon and I will tell you that there are days we negotiate around buckets, or we share the building with critters that seem to get in through the cracks. But we are maintaining the building as best we can. You'll see any increases there are sheerly reflective of cost. There is nothing here in capital improvements. It is simply to maintain the functionality of the building, to prevent any additional leaks, and to continue using it for offices as we do. It is also the largest conference room in the district and the only conference room that we use for administrative meetings. It is also a conference room that we use for various student meetings that can't be held in the specific buildings. The budget does show greater than a twelve percent increase. However, I want to point out to you, while the budget has gone up, or the budget request has gone up nineteen thousand three hundred dollars just for LEA costs in supporting curriculum instruction and assessment, this is still down from where we were in two thousand eight. And if Dr. Rubinovich would go to the next slide, I'll explain why I'm going back five years. In two thousand eight, the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks were revised. It was a major revision, and the budget at that time, approved budget, not requested, approved budget, was two hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars, or approximately fifty thousand dollars more than we're asking now. And the support for that budget was additional training in district professional development for all teachers in mathematics, reading, and developmental instruction. New teachers, mentoring, instructional support, all focused on the new Massachusetts curriculum frameworks that had been approved by the State Board of Education in two thousand seven. We also, in support of these new frameworks, to assess what our students knew and what they needed to know and be able to do. We had, we contracted with standardized assessments, happened to be called the Stanford Nine, the grade and the G made, and we sent them out for scoring, and they sent us back beautiful reports. We no longer do that. Now, in two thousand FY thirteen, we again have new Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, only these are an even more drastic change. The new frameworks are based and wholly adopt the National Core Common Standards. The Common Core standards that were approved in two thousand ten and adopted by Massachusetts in two thousand eleven incorporate a level of instruction that is both more rigorous and more encompassing than the previous frameworks. The previous frameworks did a lot to narrow the curriculum. In other words, you had a silo called reading, you had a silo called English Language Arts, you had a silo called mathematics, science, and so forth. And never those silos did they intermingle. Well, I know all of you have held jobs in, as my husband refers to it, the real world, and there's no real-world job where you write on Monday, read on Tuesday, and maybe look at statistics and other economic concerns on Wednesday. You do all of that in the same day in the same job. Well, the new curriculum frameworks of Massachusetts aligned with the Common Core standards do just that. They say real-world applications require integration. It requires a depth of knowledge that exceeds application. So we're moving into deeper learning and higher thinking skills. It's a different way of teaching than our teachers have done originally. Many of us have been around long enough to know this is almost full circle come round again. So we're sort of like the thematic units of the eighties, only now it's underscored with standards, assessments, and accountability. And in order to bring our teachers up to this level of instruction, to be able to provide students' learning for the twenty-first century, we need to train our teachers in this increased content, in the integration of content areas, and in the additional standards applied to all students. Because for the first time in May of two thousand thirteen, our students are going to be assessed wholly on national standards, and that is a different level of accountability. We need additional textbooks, technology, and teacher training are essential. And that, to those needs and those major concerns, are my objectives. Through monthly professional development, provide opportunities that will increase teacher skills. You don't need me saying it, but I want to reiterate what research across the country and the world shows us, the most important person in education, and I mean person, not program, is the teacher in front of the class. That is where effectiveness has to occur.
We didn't pay a lot of money to figure that out, did we?
No, we sure didn't.
I'm really glad to hear that.
No, that's just, that's just reading. Absolutely not. But we need to put money in investing in those teachers so they are effective. And that's what we're aiming for, to provide continuous evaluation of our curriculum, to develop curriculum and programs, and I'm skimming through this because you all can read and have copies of it in front of you, and to provide additional tools to our teachers so that they can reach all students. Because ultimately, it doesn't matter what skills the child comes into school possessing. We have to bring them from point A to point B to point C, which is graduation, and then moving on to college and career. If we continue with objectives, we are also seeking to increase students' global awareness and understanding of different cultures, and to increase opportunities for students who are talented and motivated through specific programs. We have to reach all children, and we cannot forget our children who are ready to fly. And I say that as an educator, I say it as a former teacher, and I say it as a mother, that this is one of the things that has to be part of our consideration, is providing programs that challenge all students. If we go to the next slide, you'll see a breakdown of the budget that comes through the Curriculum and Instruction Office. Our department spends, as you can see, almost three-quarters of our budget on professional development and support of staff and curriculum programs. And that's the light and dark purples. If, and I don't have the pointer, but if I had a pointer and I could go down that center line that divides the two purples, take the light green, the dark purple, and the light blue, those three segments are the percentage of my budget through the Office of Curriculum and Instruction that supports our enrichment programs. To the right of that, those other slices are all maintenance of the building and clerical Justification for changes. You'll see first, I've coupled together the three line items for our supplementary programs, Destination Imagination and Global Education, which are the two at this point. And in each of those line items, we have some slight increases, I won't call them significant, to support an increasing global education program. This is a particular area that our students are interested in, and it is also something that we can integrate into the curriculum and bring them beyond. The increase in training and curriculum work is a fifteen thousand dollar increase. It's the largest increase in my budget, and that is specifically to work with our teachers in new content as well as in new instructional strategies that are required through the assessments, and through the, even more importantly, through the new Common Core standards. This next slide shows the increases in maintenance for the Everett Educational Center. Capital improvements. I did not submit any capital improvements for the Everett- for the Everett Educational Center simply because it has to be part of the master study. Dr. Rabbinovich has already discussed that with you in that we need to do a building juice and feasibility for capacity study. And looking at the Everett and what that building is being used for or whether those offices need to be relocated has to be part of that study. So at this time, we are maintaining the building. I want to go now to the handout before I take any questions. And there's no money on it and I'm going to explain why. This overview, obviously the target is student achievement. And then I've put in the various programs and training that you've talked, that I've already spoken about. You've heard about all day from various administrators. That's what we do. And this encompasses our entire LEA budget. It also encompasses the next page, which are the current grants managed through my office. These little circles or larger circles, and I apologize for their not being on the screen, represent approximately $1,014,000 in federal and state grants that we receive. And why I say approximately is because some of them we haven't received yet. We'll receive over the course of the year. Some of the amounts will change. And there's, and I'm just going to very quickly go through these. Race to the Top is the largest grant. It is about $366,000. It is a federal grant. And it is policy by grant. Because Race to the Top has done more to change the requirements of education than anything that I have seen come along in a policy. It has been, it is part of, it is the sole reason we have a new supervision and evaluation program. It is the reason we have the National Common Core Standards that Massachusetts has adopted. And it is the reason that we have to do as much training as we do for our teachers because of the changes in instructional strategies that are required for our students to learn and to be effective in these real world applications. Title II-A.
Just out of curiosity, Jan.
Yes.
Do you think it would have happened without the bribe?
No. I'll give you the straightforward, short answer. No, I think, but I'll tell you why we needed the bribe. And this is Jan's opinion, not anything I've researched. Is I think our leaders and our educational gurus who put in standards-based instruction had done so much in the last 15 years to support isolated standards that to save face and say, "Oh, integrated instruction with real world applications that is as old as John Dewey is really the right way to go. So therefore, we're going to sweeten the pot and maybe you won't notice that we're saying we were wrong." And that's my very skeptical, a little sarcastic.
A little cynical, yes.
A little cynical. Thus, Title II-A again is class size. This directly supports our teachers. And the reason I've got these connected is, and why I say grant by policy, is that if we do not abide by the guidelines that outline the Race to the Top program that have now become regulations of the state, they withhold this money. And because of the wonders of technology, the Department of Education knows our students' schedules, our teachers' schedules, our teachers' licenses, and certifications. So everything is matched, cross-checked, and we are held accountable. 21st Century Community Learning Centers. This is the funding source for our care program that Mr. Luzon referred to. It is our second largest grant with a recent grant that we just received. It exceeds $235,000. We get added little pockets throughout the school year because we have an exemplary program in our middle and elementary schools. And this provides after-school programming that is both academic and enrichment. Again, it is all tied to students who are at risk due to low income and low MCAS scores. The Literacy Partnership for Professional Development is a grant that we received primarily focused on our elementary schools and the need for literacy improvement. And our students do very well at decoding words. They do not do well at comprehending details to be able to formulate conclusions, which is an essential skill. The Massachusetts Academic Support for At-Risk Students is a specifically targeted program that supports our high school students in an after-school tutoring program. The Regional School Improvement Grant is through our regional programs as well as part of our kindergarten grant that comes through Regional School Improvement. Safe and Supportive Schools is the remaining grant for our cooperative. The Summer Extended School Targeted Learning Programs. Last year, we were allocated $20,000 for summer programs and we ended up closer to $45,000 for summer programs. And that fluctuates. And that is specifically for at-risk students. They do not have to be low income, but they have to be at risk either through truancy, failure, or needs improvement or below on MCAS scores. And the last little green circle, well, it's green on mine. It's still gray on yours, are the Make Peace and Private Grants. This is the smallest pot. And we receive individual teacher grants through Make Peace, through the Wareham Education Foundation. And this is probably the area where we need to try to increase revenue, is through private grants. At the same time that I know I'm saying that, the economy is probably tightening grants. And we're in an odd conundrum with private grants. We're not big enough to be a Springfield or Revere to get the attention of large grant funding organizations such as the Gates Foundation. So we're not urban and we're not quite that big. But we have a lot of research that we've put together as far as our coastal needs. And I'm excited to report, and Dr. Rabbinovich, unless he got the letter in his email, but we are once again being funded as part of a regional grant with University of Massachusetts in Dartmouth. And this will help to train new teachers for our school system as well as provide professional development. So we are, that's where we're going in private grants. And that particular grant is through the National Science Foundation.
What do you mean, train new teachers?
What this particular grant does, and this is actually the second time we've received the grant, is it seeks individuals who are in some profession. Yeah, science or mathematics profession. But always thought they might want to be teachers.
Is this Teach for America on a small scale?
Not really. It's National Science Foundation brings science, technology, engineering, and math to the schools. It's a STEM, what they call the STEM program.
So it's Teach for America but specifically STEM oriented?
And it's not targeted to new graduates. It's targeted for second career people.
Okay.
In fact, when we went to that Mass Insight meeting in Boston at the Parker House, we introduced you to Tyra Lopes, who runs that for UMass Dartmouth.
And we were, I worked with Karen O'Connor, who's the director of the department at UMass Dartmouth for the initial grant. We've continued to work together. Tyra is the coordinator. And for example, through this, through the first round of this grant, we had a teacher at the high school and a teacher at the co-op, basically who were free to the district. They were doing internship years in the district in teaching science, math, technology, and engineering. And so, and then while they're doing their internship year, they receive a stipend through the grant plus they receive a coursework and a laptop to complete their Masters of Education.
But we don't have any actually on staff.
At this point, we have one paraprofessional who is becoming a teacher, who is involved in the program. And we are looking to recruit individuals for the cohort that will begin in the spring. But we do not have a teacher intern on staff.
Nor someone employed as a full-time teacher.
We have a full-time teacher on staff who is a graduate of this program.
We do.
Yes, we do. Because the string to the program is in order to keep your laptop and not have to repay your tuition for the Masters of Education that you have received, you must teach in a high-needs district. So we get to keep them. So that's an overview of the grants in my office. I know this workshop is about the LEA budget, the local budget, but I wanted to give you a little bit of the other side of the story. One other thing that the Race to the Top funds that's part of the mandated programs are increased training for AP teachers and for pre-AP instruction in the middle school. And we are training teachers in those programs. And that will add to the effectiveness of a new grant we hope to receive through Mass Insight in training our AP teachers in the high school. I am open to your questions. Yes, Dick?
I seem to recall roughly years ago that our salary schedule for teachers by contract by the time they went through all their steps, was pretty comparable to other teachers throughout the state. We weren't much higher, we weren't much lower. We were about there. But I also recall, and there'd be a question on this following the answer, that our beginning salaries were lower by a measurable amount. And is that still the case? By how much? And then I have a question.
Let me answer that for you. I have a family member who is teaching at Upper Cape. First-year teacher. Step one. He's making $5,500 more teaching there than he would be if he was teaching here.
Okay.
But regionally, yes. Our starting salary is the lowest.
The lowest.
And at 12 years' experience, we are comparable to surrounding districts.
Well, I guess this is the businessman in me. I don't understand, if I'm a competent businessman, I'm a teacher, why I would go to a district and take less money. Couldn't we turn this around? I realize that there's contracts, I realize there's unions involved. I understand all of that. You can smile all you want. But why don't we pay more for the beginning teachers and really drive towards that?
Can I answer this question?
Please.
Anybody.
The reason I want to answer the question is because at the last contract negotiation, I explored with Barry the idea of doing precisely that. Doing something about our lower end. And the problem was that to take all the teachers that are at the lower end and bump them up at the same time that you're raising the scales would have been so expensive, it became a prohibitive concept. It just, we couldn't afford to do it. Bottom line.
Before Jan said, and I happen to agree, and I think we'd all agree, most important person in the equation is the teacher. And I'm not going to sit.
Dick, I don't disagree with that.
I understand that. You say it's more expensive. How much more expensive?
I don't remember the precise numbers, but my recollection is we were easily getting into six figures.
Okay. We didn't know about it.
60% of our teaching staff are in the first five years.
Okay.
And that's where the discrepancy goes. So by increasing that 60% of the staff, if we have 250 teachers, 50%, let's reuse round numbers, 125 people. And if you bump them up $5,000 each, do the math. We just didn't have that extra money because we would have had a cut more.
You realize we fought very hard to try and reduce costs for budgetary reasons so that this year, FY12, sorry, next year, FY13, there will be lanes but no steps. In other words, there's educational increases but not longevity increases for all of the teachers.
And in 12, they took a zero. They, we bargained a zero for this year and then one and a half for next year.
So this is when concept, philosophy, and all the rest of those stuff, and you know where I'm going, hits hard reality. I wanted to do it. It made perfect business sense to me to do it. But I couldn't afford to do it because it's not like I could raise prices for a differentiated product that I would be able to sell to the marketplace, right? I didn't have that.
Can I take another tack on this answer, maybe? If I were sitting there as a businessperson and agreeing that the most, the most important person in this equation is the teacher, therefore, the most critical component of any educational system is having an effective teacher. And theory would say that if we paid starting teachers more, we could be more selective, perhaps. Perhaps we'd even be able to provide less training when they came in to teach. Unfortunately, the, you've got to look at what, how many people are willing to go into teaching this at this point in time. And then secondly, the training that we're provided, that we're providing that is costing us in excess of $100,000 is training that we would, we're still mandated to provide. So any increase in the bottom, let's say one-third of the salary scale, is no matter how you slice it, is a net increase. And it needs additional funding.
Let me take this even more broadly. I wanted to do it. But there was a part of me that even though I knew it was the right thing to do, when we couldn't afford it, I accepted it for the following reason. It's only because of the investment we made in the department heads and the instructional leaders that I think the three of us are starting to get a comfort level that three years from now, two years, four years, something like that, we'll actually be, have something in place where we can effectively differentiate those teachers that are doing a great job and those teachers that are doing an average job and those teachers that are not doing so well. And so if I want to invest a lot of money, which I consider six figures to be, to upgrade the salary scale, it's probably a good idea to do it when I can have differentiated what's going on in the classroom. And frankly, right now, if you had asked, and I have, I got a very honest answer from an elementary school principal in a workshop we did related to this subject. And what she said to me was, "I don't have any teachers on an improvement plan." And of course, I wasn't happy to hear that because that suggests that every teacher in her system is doing a great job. Why doesn't she? Because it wasn't until we gave her these instructional leaders that she felt that she actually had the capacity to prove in an evaluation who was doing a great job and who wasn't. So part of the reason we need to augment that even further, which is taking these half-time positions and making them full-time, is because sometime down the road, hopefully not too long, we're going to know exactly who's doing a great job. Maybe someday, and I've told the President of the Union, not for the foreseeable future, but maybe someday I'll actually be a merit pay proponent again. Because at that point, I will be able to say to the teacher, "We've got hard data, hard observations of both, both un, both spontaneous as well as planned evaluation observations that says who's doing a good job and who's not." Until we have that, it is fraudulent to suggest that we really know what's going on in these classrooms. That's quite an admission. But it's, it's an admission of failure because all over the country, not just in Wareham, that failure is going on. We are changing that in Wareham. We are changing that in Wareham, and in a few years, we will be ready to invest the taxpayer's dollars in the great teachers, and the ones that haven't been doing such a good job, we hope, will be gone. By the way, I think that's a small fraction. I want to be clear, I'm not indicting Wareham teachers. I'm saying there's a small percentage that are not doing a good job. I am certain of that, and so are the principals, and so are the director of curriculum and the superintendent. And I'm sure Bob feels the same way. But until we can actually do that with integrity, it's just talk. And it's talk that we have every right to be pushed back at by the union and say, how do you know they're not doing a good job? Well, we're finding out, is the bottom line.
In the interest of time, is there anything specific from what Jan said that anybody wants to ask? Thank you very much, Mrs. Rotella. I am not going to go through the rest of my separate PowerPoint where I actually go through the 2,000 account, 3,000 accounts, and so forth, because you've heard all of it from the line managers. What I do want to do, though, is two slides with you as a wrap-up, and then to offer an opportunity. So the total budget, if we look at the net school spending side of the equation, which is what you've heard about mostly today, and that would be $27,195,370. That's the total, no, net school spending, excuse me, and non-net school spending is That's what we feel we need to run the school system. Net school spending, it's a 7.1% increase, and non-net school spending, it's 16.4%. I could show you a slide that shows that the previous six years for the transportation, which is non-net, we have had, for the six years, the average increase is minus 0.5% of an increase in six years of running a company. I don't know who can keep the same level of service as your fleet gets older, gas goes up, labor contracts goes up, and have a lower number than you had six years ago. So that's why the large increase there. It has been underfunded. And we need to have it funded appropriately so we can use the money that we generate in the revolving account to buy vehicles, since there does not seem to be the appetite for it on the town side. Second, the 7%, we've gone through, you've seen where the increases are. We're asking for textbooks, we're asking for some personnel, we're asking to kind of get back to where we were. You've heard that we've had ARAMoney disappear, EDUJobs disappear. So we finally hit the wall. And last year, there was a growth on town side, there was a decrease in the amount of employees on the school side. We cannot have another year like that. So to any one of you who are here today, or anybody who's watching this after it's aired, if you have individual questions, please call, make an appointment, come in. I'll be happy to open all this up and show anybody any part of it and answer any questions. If, after you get home, as we've said, you've heard an awful lot of data today, and you have individual questions, or you think the presentation would be better if it showed, please email me, because I have four more, or at least three more opportunities at this presentation. On, I'm missing it. Anna, because I don't think I have this one. It was on the first slide, actually.
Looking at your dates.
Yes.
January 11th, January 18th, and January 25th.
All right. So January 11th, I'm going to do a mini-version of today for the school board. I am asking all my managers and principals to be there. We'll go through the same thing, and I would hope, and I have not talked with Jeff about this, that we will have a dialogue about the number that should move forward to the next meeting, which is the January 18th, which is when we have the public hearing, where the Board of Selectmen will be. I'm sure the town administrator will take the opportunity to come and present his budget as he did last year. And that's fine. We can see the whole thing, we can hear what money we don't have. At the end of the day, we need to make decisions about what is important for this town. And you are the folks, and I hate to put it that way, but you are the folks that have to make the recommendation. Whether they take your recommendation or not, I clearly understand that, you know, other people have their own opinions. But we're looking for you to help support us as much as you can, and we'll move from that point. Jeff?
Let's reality-check a little bit here. The revenue to support that budget for the town, unless the state does something that no one expects, doesn't exist. So what I am asking you, and I will ultimately end up asking the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen as well, is to get behind a contingent budget. And by contingent, and I'm not saying it's going to be those numbers, okay? We can work with you on those numbers certainly up to a point. But if the entire leadership of the town, or the vast majority of the leadership of the town, got behind a budget, including the school budget, that was contingent upon an operational override and perhaps a debt exclusion to meet Allen's needs as well, and put it before town meeting with the full knowledge that either town meeting gets behind it, along with the leadership, or they don't. And if they don't, then we go to a Plan B. And Plan B would obviously be significantly less than that, and perhaps for the town side of government as well, and would not necessitate any operational override or debt exclusion. And then it is up to the various boards, the superintendent, the town administrator, to make it clear to the taxpayers the implications for going to Plan B. Now, in the case of the school budget, the implications are fairly clear, that the vast majority of what would happen would be fewer teachers, and larger class sizes, and fewer programs. That's just the reality. But it seems to me that if we don't go that route of a contingent budget and then a Plan B budget, we are not fulfilling our responsibilities to give people choices with the full information necessary to make intelligent choices and decisions when it comes down to it. So I'm not asking you to necessarily individually, or even as a committee, to approve that number or even something approaching that number. I'm just asking for you to get behind giving the taxpayers the choice between something like that or something far more draconian, and we will be glad to let you know the implications of that draconian austerity Plan B budget. And then, as I have said more than once to Barry, if we in fact say that those are the implications of that budget, you can guarantee we will follow through and do it. It will not be a smoke and mirrors, it will not be crying wolf, or whatever, you know, phrase you want to use. We'll really do it so that the consequences are real and the choices are real.
And the eight teachers who lost their jobs from this building, so that the entire social studies department was wiped out, know that it wasn't smoke and mirrors, it was real.
And I'm surprised that nobody here, and from what I can gather in the town, although the town budget has only been out a few days, that nobody is kind of on what the town budget contemplates for the school department. And that is a cut of, do you ever take a million dollars on a year?
Oh, more than that. In other words, if we take what we were funded at last year, 25.3, yeah, he's about 24.3 or so, about a million dollars.
From last year.
Right.
And 3 million off of what you're projecting here, or asking for.
Yep.
And I don't know that this is the appropriate form to talk about it, but nonetheless, it is, it's reality, it's out there.
My feeling is, and I said this to Mr. Andrews in a meeting I had with him on Monday, that it is too early to talk about revenue, because there is no indication from the state yet what they are going to do about Chapter 70 numbers. And that won't happen until the end of February or so. So our point is to say, this is what we need. And, you know, to Jeff's point, we have to come up with a way to do it one way or another. Now, if we get more funding, then we have to come up with less through contingency, or we have to cut less. But at this point, it's, you know, the child of talks, we have to build a budget. So we have built the budget on what we need to run the system. But I am not, to be perfectly honest, taking very seriously the number that was put in. If you went to last year, and we started at the 24 million or 23 someplace, and how many months of back and forth did it go for us to get to the end? So closer to town meeting, we'll worry about where the revenue numbers are and what the town administrator has for his number. Because the difference, I will be taking this very same show, so to speak, to every school council, and I will guarantee that we will have more parents in attendance at this year's town meeting than in previous years. That will be the difference.
But let's be clear, to have dueling groups on town meeting floor-
Is not in anybody's best interest.
Is a failure of leadership on the part of the town. And that's what I'm trying to avoid.
I'm not suggesting-
I know you're not.
I'm just-
I know you're not. But that was, but my comment was trying to avoid.
Sorry, my passion is showing. Any potting things? I want to thank you all for all of your time.
Thank you.
I know it's a very long day, and much goes on, but I don't know another way to do it without you being able to actually see the people who are running the buildings and hear about, you know, whether it's the mold on the outside of the building, or the water coming through the ceiling, you know, it's a real, you know, we have seven buildings. Your chairman has taken a walk through all the buildings, he has seen it himself. So thank you. And any other information you need, you know where my office is.
Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you for inviting us. Very good.
That would be a wrap, Kristen.